Good morning. I would like to remind everyone, please make sure that all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gadsden YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Ivan Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Latham.
Here.
Councilman Smith.
Here.
Councilman Avery.
Here.
Councilman Back.
Here.
Councilman Wilson is absent today. Councilwoman Minatra.
Here.
And Councilman Robinson.
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Keith Williamson to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the blessings you freely give us. Thank you for your Son, Jesus, most of all. We do ask that you guide us and direct us, Father, as we handle the business before us. We pray that we truly seek you, never resist you at any time, Lord, and I just do pray for your wisdom, your guidance, your knowledge and discernment to be bestowed on each one of us, Father, as we go through this period. We love you, we thank you for all that you have done and all that you promised to do. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session in city council meeting held on April 11th. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
Item six, the Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of April 7th through April 13th.
So moved.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Agenda item seven is reserved for proclamations and commendations. I believe Mayor's Office has one today.
Mr. President, members of the council, it's my privilege on behalf of Mayor Craig Ford that we present to you a proclamation to a man whose name is synonymous with high school football in Edwah County, especially here in Gadsden. It's Mr. Fred Gross. His proclamation reads, "Mr. Fred Buster Gross was born November the 26th, 1935, in Gadsden, Alabama, to Fred Claire Gross. In 1953 Buster graduated from MSASN High School in Gadsden, Alabama, where he was an outstanding football player for the Rebels. He even received in 1953 an All-State Honors for both the Birmingham News and the Montgomery Advertiser. Mr. Gross received a scholarship to play football at Alabama Politec Institute, which is now Auburn University, War Eagle. Although he was a very competitive football player, after suffering a neck injury his sophomore year, his football career came to a halt. Since he had ambitions of becoming a football coach, he was able to stay on scholarship in order to pay for his work on the freshman team. He was also part of the coaching staff in 1957 when Auburn won its first national championship. Soon after, he completed his bachelor degree in education and went on to serve as a coach at Southside High School and after an unsatisfying season left coaching for a while. Due to his intense love for the game, he began coaching again at his All-Motter High School in Atala for two years and went on to become the head coach of the Walnut Grove High School team in 1963. Over the next three years, he led the Patriots to a victory which included in 1964 Class A State Championship with him being named as the 1965 Class A Coach of the Year. In 1972 Buster Gross went back to his All-Motter MSASN High School for 19 years coaching to build a powerhouse football program. Not only did they win the 1984 5A State Championship, Coach Gross was also named the 5A Coach of the Year and also was allowed to coach in the Alabama High School Football Game. Coach Buster Gross retired from coaching following the 1991 season with an overall record of 200 wins, 104 losses, and 10 ties. He had 10 state playoff appearances, eight area, eight regional championships, five Marshall County Championships, two state championships, two state Coach of the Year Awards, and coached in two All-Star Games. In 1995, the seat at Gadsden held a day of honor for Coach Gross and has been inducted into the Edwah County Sports Hall of Fame, the Alabama High School Sports Hall of Fame, and the Marshall County Sports Hall of Fame. Coach Buster Gross was a beloved father of three children, Kelly Gross, the late Lisa Jones, and Barry Gross. He also had four grandchildren, three grand-grandchildren, and he will be remembered for his outstanding career as a coach and teacher as well as providing motivation and influence to countless number of players, students, and football fans. Now there, as Craig Ford Mayor of the City of Gadsden, I hereby join the Gadsden City Council in proclaiming Tuesday, April 18th, 2023, as Coach Fred Buster Gross Day. It is the honor City of Gadsden's honoring and loving for the football and extending our sincere condolences to his family."
I'd like to ask retired Circuit Judge Allen Milliken, who's an MSASN graduate, and also the Chairman of our Gadsden City School Board, to offer a few remarks about Coach Gross.
Thank you, Ken. Appreciate that. All I wanted to say is on behalf of the school board and the citizens of Gadsden, and this is a homeboy that's made good, but one of the main things that I wanted to call your attention to was the very last part of that proclamation about the effect on the young people in our school system that Coach brought about in their lives. There are so many out there today walking around that have succeeded in life because of the influence of him and the example that he set for them to follow in his footsteps as far as the determination and the championship in his blood to go and to do and to be the best that you can achieve, the discipline that he taught our young folks. I hope that we can emulate that and do it in today with all our kids in the school system. So on behalf of the Gadsden City School System and the job that Coach did and the example that he set, we thank you very much and we thank you for his recognition today. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge, and thank you, Ms. Gross. If I may.
Yes.
To Coach Gross, Kelly Gross, thank you for being here. Thank you for receiving that with a warm welcome. Your dad, of course, as an MSASN graduate myself, meeting your dad, also having your influence, continue up his legacy because as you have, we all look to you and see your dad through you. Thank you for your passion and thank you for your compassion that you have instilled through what your dad has done for you that has impacted this entire community. So sympathize with you. Thank you for receiving that again. Thank you for being here and love you much. Thank you, Councilman Avery.
Is Ms. Gail Relford here? I don't know about Ms. Gail. I think you want to come up too and join us.
Good morning, Council. On behalf of Mayor Craig Ford, I am so honored to present this mayor's commendation to Ms. Gail Relford. On Wednesday, April 5th, 2023, Ms. Gail Relford, City of Gadsden Transit Driver intervened to save a life while on her bus route. She was on her west bus route approaching the Way of the Cross Ministries on North 24th Street when she noticed a man lying in the bus shelter incapacitated. Ms. Relford saw several others surrounding the man, but no one appeared to be calling for help. Ms. Relford took immediate action. She got off of the bus, tried to get to the man to respond, but he did not. She then called City of Gadsden Dispatch to request paramedics. When the ambulance and paramedics arrived, they started to use the automated artificial manual breathing unit bag for breathing and administering medication, which revived him after several minutes. He was then transported to the hospital. It was later determined that the only call made on this man's behalf was from Ms. Relford. We sincerely thank Ms. Relford for her timely response to a very critical situation while on her route. I commend her for her bravery and ability to act fast and to prevent an awful situation from happening, especially the loss of life. So on behalf of Mayor Craig Ford, we present this commendation to Ms. Gail Relford, and thank you for your service.
Thank you for your actions. I think we see time and time again, our city is blessed with some outstanding individuals that work for the City of Gadsden, and there's one right there. Thank you so much for your service and thank you for what you do.
Agenda item eight is unfinished business. We have none today. We'll move to item nine, which is a resolution awarding bid number 3503 for 2023 Nuisance Abatement Demolition Project. The city engineer has recommended the bid be awarded to Bedwell and Horton Excavating LLC. A unit price has been established and the contract will cover up to $500,000. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Agenda item 10 is a resolution appointing members to Water Works and Sewer Board. This appoints Kent Back for a term expiring on November 1st, 2028, and Chris Robinson for a term expiring on November 1st, 2026. However, their service would end when their terms as council members expire if that occurs first. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Agenda item 11 is a resolution authorizing agreement with CDG Incorporated. This is for engineering services related to US 431 turn lane improvements for a new commercial development, and the amount is $45,470. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Under the first readings, this is agenda item 12. This is an ordinance authorizing tax increment financing funds for expenditures related to US 431 turn lane improvements. This is related to agenda item number 11 and appropriates $45,470 in TIF funds to the street improvements account. This ordinance has been presented today for the first reading and the council will vote on it next week. Item 13 is the ordinance amending fiscal year 2023 budget. This is related to agenda item number nine and transfers $500,000 from the general unassigned fund balance for the nuisance abatement demolition project. This ordinance has been presented today for the first reading and the council will vote on it next week. Brings us to agenda item 14, which is new business. I believe we have a couple of those.
Mr. President, on the new business, I would like to make a motion that we suspend the rules today to discuss property located at 100 Wall Street, Gadsden, Walnut Street, I'm sorry.
All right, there's been a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
There's a second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Mr. President, we have an opportunity here to look at a property that is actually needed by the city to further to actually do refer development, among other things, and so, do we have anybody here today that can actually come and share some more information on this property?
I'm here on behalf of Mayor Craig Ford to just talk about the city purchasing the property located at 100 Walnut Street, also known as YMCA. We have reached an agreement on a purchase price which will include the furnishings of the YMCA, of all equipment except that which is leased, which is the cardiovascular equipment. That includes weight equipment as well as furniture. The board has approved, their board has approved this purchase, and so we are just seeking the approval from y'all.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, did you have the purchase price amount in that paper there?
We have the information here and the, actually, find my information, I'm sorry. Purchase price for this property located, known as YMCA, is available for the council to consider purchases today. It's at $950,000, and I want to make a motion that we suspend the rules to actually move forward to purchase this property.
All right, and we've suspended, we've done that, so this would be a motion to purchase the property.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to actually purchase this property today.
Right, there's a second? All right, is there any discussion?
I would like to add one stipulation on that. Well, I'll bring that up later, at a later date.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
All right, do we have any other new business?
Yeah, Mr. President, I have one. Legal document, legal department requested by the engineering department, document resolution authorizing agreement with TTL Incorporated, Couso River, Broad Street Memorial Bridge Improvement Projects, budgeted at $6,500. Just want to present this as an item to consider today.
All right, I guess we would have to suspend the rules to do that, so need a motion to suspend the rules?
A motion to suspend the rules.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
All right, thank you. Is that all the new business, I believe, today? So, agenda item 15 is for department reports, committees, and boards. Do we have any?
Josh, I knew I could count on you.
Today, though, it's good news and good news only.
Good.
So it's a beautiful day outside. Hope everybody will get outside and enjoy a little bit of it. The EMA is going to be doing another weather radio giveaway this weekend on Saturday. We will be in the Cash Saver parking lot. They gave us permission to use the upper part of their parking area to do a drive-through like we did last time, but having a larger area will hopefully alleviate any traffic backup out into the streets. So these will be programmed just like the other radios were. We are going to have to put a limit on two per vehicle when we do the event Saturday at 2:00 because we want to try to get as many as we can out into the community. You know, as I shared after the last event, I mean, it was, you know, it was like Black Friday at Walmart. By the time we'd gone through 30 minutes, there was, you know, our amount had greatly decreased, so we're going to try to extend that out. We really wanted to focus on our socio-economically depressed areas, and fortunately Cash Saver was more than willing to let us use their parking lot.
Great, thank you to Cash Savers.
So unless you have any questions, that's all I have.
Could I request 50 of those?
You'll need to route that through the Mayor's Office just because they're the ones that oversee exactly on the...
So who's over that department? That's Tina or John? Can I get 50 of those?
The office one.
Huh?
The office one.
Any other questions?
What time?
2:00 in the afternoon until we run out. And the reason I say until we run out because they tend to go very, very quickly, and we were about 30 minutes into it the last time when we did it at the venue, and we had gone through our allotted amount in about 37 minutes, so I couldn't really cut it off at 37 minutes. So we'll start out at 2:00 and we're working with the lovely Ms. Back to try to get some of her students to come out and help us, and then, of course, the EMA staff will be there as well.
Good, that's, I appreciate y'all doing that. Obviously, this is a big need because of the demand, so I would encourage everybody, the citizens, to please be mindful of the two per car. I understand some people may not have transportation and can't get there, but it puts our staff in a very awkward position where you're, you've got a line of cars and you're given six to one car, but then there's people behind you, so I admire how you're coming up with the two per car limit and try to be as equitable as we can. And are there other radios coming after this? I mean, can you, are there more available?
We've got a shipment coming in this week that we'll be using this Saturday, and it'll just depend on how many we go through.
Yeah.
One thing that we've been able to do that has really helped get more out into the community is folks have either been messaging us on social media or giving us a call, sending us an email if they're shut in or disabled, and we've had staff people actually take radios out to them if they have no way to get it. I mean, we're that passionate about making sure that folks have this measure of safety.
And for those that don't have a weather radio or maybe they don't get one, there is a app, right? If you have a cellphone, then there's a app?
Yes, sir. We actually have several. We have our Gadsden-Edwah County EMA Alert Edwah app. You can go on Google Play and also the Apple Store to get that. They're both on sale right now for the low, low price of free, so it doesn't cost you anything but a little bit of space on your phone, and you'll get all the weather updates. We have our traditional Alert Edwah system where you can sign up on the website to put more information in, like if you want to put in multiple locations, homework, church. And then also you can sign up for a plethora of updates with, you know, Birmingham television stations as well as the National Weather Service. We really try to be communicative when it comes to severe weather because that's the one common thing that we hear from people, and we heard it in the Sardis community most recently, you know, we had no warning. Well, you know, when the storm is only around for seven seconds, you know, that's a very quick time span, so whatever they can do to get the weather notifications, we want to try to help them out with.
Well, thank you. And Michael, if you haven't already, could we put that information about the apps on the city website and Facebook page and all those things? Brett, that'd be, you've probably already done it, but I've just...
It's been out there at various points throughout the year, but I'll reiterate it.
Sure, all right. Well, thank you so much.
All right.
Thanks, Josh.
Thank you.
All right. Any other departments, committees, or boards? We got a hot mic over here, now's your chance, all right? If not, we will go to council remarks by the mayor and council. Brett, would you like to go first on behalf of Mayor Craig Ford?
Yes, sir. On behalf of Mayor Ford, we just want to extend a thank you to everyone who participated in the cleanup day last Friday. He and all of his team were so appreciative. We had about 200 city employees roll up their sleeves, a lot of them, you know, don't do that kind of intensive labor every day. Some of them do, some of them don't, as far as getting down and picking up trash and hauling tires and all kinds of stuff that was out there. So we loaded up 11, over 11,000 pounds of trash, 5.6 tons, and now it's in the proper location in the landfill where it's supposed to be, as opposed to being out on our streets and in our waterways, so that was a great thing, and I think the mayor intends to make that an annual event and extend it for public volunteer opportunities as well, so that was an exciting kickoff to that. As y'all may have seen, we unfortunately had a vandalism incident up in Councilman Robinson's district at our beautiful Nakalula Falls area. Just wanted to thank Gadsden Police Department and everyone involved with apprehending the suspect, and as you may have seen, Mayor Ford's statements, he is not taking anything like that lightly at all, so we'll be pursuing those to the nth degree. You may have also seen that there are some streetlight improvements going on around Gadsden. Mayor Ford has developed a relationship with Alabama Power such that they are helping us with a contract to update these lights. Not only are they making them lit up again if they weren't lit up, but they're going from the old incandescent yellow bulbs to some really bright LED bulbs that'll also last longer, so that's a very important thing. It's all part of cleaning up and beautifying the City of Gadsden. And then you may also be seeing some announcements from Mayor Ford on social media about paving projects being completed all around the city. There's projects in every district. This is the general paving project funded by local funds and gas tax dollars, so it's just always good to celebrate every square inch of road that we can resurface, so that's all from us.
Thank you. Thank you, Brett. All right, from the council, I'll start with Councilwoman, you want me to go the other way? Councilman Robinson, would you mind to kick us off with the council remarks?
Thank you, Council.
We just, I think that's called, we're taking an audible.
I just want to reiterate, I was thankful to get that text yesterday afternoon telling me that we did apprehend and arrest this person that did all that graffiti and all that vandalism in Nakalula Falls. This council and I know this mayor's administration, we're not going to put up with that. We're going to clean this city up, and we're going to do it one way or the other. We are putting out cameras at different places in the city, you know, where people do our dumping or vandalism, so just, we will catch you. So why people want to vandalize things that we're trying to improve, I've never wanted to understand, but like, if you do it, we will catch you. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Minatra.
And I just want to say how grateful I am for the cleanup day that we had on Friday, and I just want to cite one particular person, and that was the team leader for District Six. Wendell Clark did a fantastic job. He had the entire opportunity to map out exactly where the team was going to go. We divided ourselves up, and I will say that he had a system that worked north, south, east, west, and we covered all of Walnut Park, so I just want to commend Wendell Clark for a great job. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Avery?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I just want to kind of reiterate that announcement about the weather radios because I've had a lot of seniors definitely calling in about those, so that event, again, drive-through event at Cash Savers this Saturday at 2:00 PM until two, no more than two weather radios per vehicle, and then I'll be going up today to get 50, and so for those seniors, I definitely a lot of those from the nutrition program that did not get one from the first event, I'll be over to see you, all right? Bridging the Gap to Home Ownership with Habitat for Humanity is having an event this evening, April 18th today, at Gadsden City School. I attended the last event they had at Carver Center. Very informative, very, very important event. If you're looking for homeownership, looking for Habitat to build you a home, the opportunity is now, and the program is a very, very good program. I just, even if you're not interested or don't need a home, the knowledge is so important that you can, I'm sure you know someone in your memory bank or in your contacts that could utilize this program and benefit from it, which is a great program, so thank you Habitat for Humanity, thank you for the event today, 6:00 PM, Gadsden City School System. Want to thank all the moms, small mom and pop businesses... a community that was once a business district. So, thank you all to you small mom and pop businesses, not only to District Three, but all over the city of Gadsden as it relates to mom and pop businesses. Community cleanup as it relates to District Three, we will kick off, as we're in our planning stages now. It will kick off in June, will go through July, and end in August. So, we have plenty of groups that are signing up now to assist and help. There is a great partnership with the state of Alabama and Keep Edgewall Beautiful. So, we have been in conversations with them, and so, materials are being brought in and collected. So, again, for those that are interested, where you want volunteer hours, or just want to participate in what we have going on with, when it relates to cleaning up District Three in particular, please, ma'ams and sirs, please get in touch with us so that we can sign you, get you on the docket, and make sure that we get you all information as it relates to how we are going to go out with strategy on the particular dates that will come out eventually concerning June, July, and August as it relates to community cleanup. Want to thank all the community members that came out to our community meeting on last Tuesday. Thank Craig Scott from the Gadsden Public Library that came out as well. Good information that always come out of our Gadsden Public Library, a great entity that we have in the city of Gadsden. So, encourage you to continue to go to the Gadsden Public Library, those that are a free source and program to the community. But those that do not go there regularly, just take a moment to kind of go there, check out the cafe, and all of the other incentives that the Gadsden Public Library and Craig Scott and his staff has to offer to us. This has been a question that has come up, come up, and come up, so I'm saying it out loud, coffee with a cop. We're just waiting for confirmation. So, if I can get a confirmation here soon, so I can stop getting phone calls, because that seems to be a popular event that some seniors are wanting, because we do have some issues in our community that need some resolution. We're having 2:00 AM drag races on Tuscaloosa Avenue, 2:00 AM, 3:00 AM, 4:00 AM spinning, be it whether it's on a weekend or whenever. We're having continuous shootings, and so, some seniors want some answers. We have some veterans that want to just, you know, question these, even though we have a no platform deal, but these are some of the questions that is being, that I can't particularly answer. I'm not that professional. But this is an event that I'm trying to adopt for our community so that we can get some, at least some response from our department as it relates to some of the incidents that we're having in our community. And so, I'll make that announcement. We'll look to be able to kind of update our seniors on that, and then we'll go from there. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilman Avery. Councilman Smith?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just want, everything rises and falls on leadership, so I like to do this as often as I can. Thank the mayor and his staff. I don't know how often you hear, I think you're doing an amazing job, so just want to tell you thank you. Thank you to this council. We're still growing, we're still learning. Had a great conference on last week to try to help to serve the citizens of Gadsden. It's refreshing to ride through the city and see so many new projects going on. That is great to see. Let you know that we got people behind the scenes working hard. It's good to get to know so many people last week during the cleanup day. That was a blessing. Don't forget Olive Garden about to open up next week, y'all. I'm looking forward to that as well, and so, I'm going to be, try to be the first one in line. To Ms. Gross, wow, your dad was an amazing man, an amazing coach. Had to play against him for four years of high school, and so, certainly, God bless you with a good dad. I want to echo what Councilman Avery said. He was a tremendous leader and a tremendous coach, and did a lot of great things throughout the city. So, thank you to all of you who do what you do on a daily basis. We certainly appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Smith. Councilwoman Latham, you ready?
Thank you. President Back, let me start by saying thank you to School Board President Judge Milliken for your presence today and for the work that you are doing along with the school board with our school system. I also want to echo the words of several of the council members with respect to Coach Gross. Thank you, Ms. Gross, for being here today, and just thankful for the legacy of your father. We live in a climate today where people will pull their phones when something is taking place and video or go live. Thank you, Ms. Reford, for your heroic and unselfish act of being observant to move quickly and swiftly to assist the person that was in need on your route. Thank you so much for that. And I would like to, again, we've said it publicly on our Facebook page, but I do want to say thank you to the mayor and to the employees of the city for your assistance on Friday, Mr. Moore, for your assistance on Friday. It was a good time. It was a good time. And so, I am sure and hopeful that what we have begun in each district, that District One will continue those efforts. It makes a difference when you're out there picking it, picking the trash up. It becomes a little personal. So, I echo the words of Councilmember Robinson, and we will be placing cameras throughout District One, and I'll say it is personal now, because I was out there picking paper up, and, but I am grateful for the help as well as District One. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilwoman Latham. Ms. Gross, Kelly, I just want to echo the comments, and I see at least two of my high school football teammates from, or three of my high school football teammates from Gadsden High School. So, there's four Gadsden High Tiger football players in this room that deeply respected your daddy. He was a true gentleman. He was an unbelievable football coach. He could take his and beat yours, and he could take yours and beat his. He was, he was that kind of a coach. And, you know, it's interesting, he was on the other side from us, you know, as kids, as high school kids, but you know, as I got to become an adult and I got to know him, that disappeared. He just became a friend. He was, he was Coach Gross. I never called him Buster. To me, he was, he was Coach Gross. I had a lot of respect for him. So, a lot of respect for you and your family, and just know that we are, continue to keep in our thoughts and prayers. Glad you're here today. Also want to echo Judge Milliken, thank you for being here. You know, you've served our community for many years as a circuit judge, and now you've stepped into the, to another political arena, which is the elected school board, and you serve as the chairman. And y'all, there's good things going on in the Gadsden Skitties, in the Gadsden City School System. We have good leadership, we have good teachers, and we've got good students. And so, it all starts at the top. The speed of the gang is the speed of the boss, and so, thank you for what you're doing for our, continue to do for our community and for our children, most of all, because that's what we're all here for after all. Y'all, I mean, we're here for the future, which is the children. So, thank you for what you do. Really mean that. Thank you. You saw us spend $950,000 to purchase the YMCA building. We suspended the rules. I just want to address that just momentarily. It was a timing issue with the sale of the property and with needs of the YMCA board, and so, we were reactive to that. The overall vision of that comes from the mayor's office and the hiring of orchestra partners for riverfront development. You know, we awarded a $70,000 contract to this company to come in, and they're working on riverfront development plans. It's going to include, more than likely, the footprint will go to the YMCA building. And then, simultaneously, due to the leadership in our mayor's office, we're talking about moving Highway 411, which is also known as Albert Raines Boulevard, over here, and guess what? It comes right into the YMCA and to that pool and places over there. It is a crucial piece of property for the city of Gadsden. It's a crucial piece of property for the future of the city of Gadsden, and we needed to make that decision today. So, we don't take it lightly when we suspend the rules to spend $950,000 of your dollars, taxpayer dollars, but it was needed to be accomplished this morning, and I'm proud of our council for stepping up and doing the right thing, and proud of our administration for the work that's been going on for weeks to bring that to fruition. I think you're going to see in time, that's going to be a smart move, and what the administration is doing with our federal help, with Congressman Robert Aderholt and Senator Katie Britt and Senator Tommy Tuberville to get federal money to help do the things that we're starting to do. Y'all, Gadsden's going to look a lot different four years from now. So, you may want to go around and start taking some pictures, because in four years, the city's going to look a lot different. There's a lot of great things going on, a lot of progress going on, and today, you got to see some of that, and you kind of got to see it real time, because this all occurred basically this morning. So, we had to act quick, and I'm proud that we did that. And so, the YMCA, my understanding is that they won't have a brick and mortar YMCA, but there will be YMCA services continuing in the city of Gadsden and in Edgewall County. So, the Y is not going away as far as YMCA services, but the building will now be owned by the city of Gadsden. Want to brag on our mayor. He's not here today, as you can see. He is, you know, serves in the National Guard, right? Is that right, Brett? You may have seen on social media that he was promoted to, I'm going to call it commander of the Fort McCle, of the training facility at Fort McClellan. So, there was a flag ceremony, how they do that in the Army, where you change for whoever's in charge. So, I don't know what his rank is. I don't know if he's a captain, or a colonel, or a whatever, but, but I know he's the commander, and he's in charge of the training at Fort McClellan. That's a pretty big deal. So, our mayor is not only working hard for us with his staff, he's also serving our country and at Fort McClellan as he's over the training facility there. So, when you see him, congratulate him, thank him for his, thank him for his service. We got guys like Judge Milliken doing all kinds of stuff, serving our community. We've got Mayor Ford doing those kind of things. So, my hat's off to you guys and for stepping up and assuming those leadership roles. I also want to echo to our Gadsden Police Department, thank you for what you did at Nakalula Falls in finding the person that damaged our national treasure. I don't want to call out names, because I would probably forget somebody, but I think some of you guys are sitting in this room, that's not easy work. I don't know how you did what you did, but you, but you found him, and thank you for doing that. And I echo Councilman Robinson's comment, we're not going to put up with that. We're not going to stand back. Our police department's not going to stand back, the administration and the council, we're not just going to let you come and just ruin our city like that. We have spent, since I've been on this council four years and some five months, we have spent millions of dollars at Nakalula Falls of your money, taxpayer money, to improve Nakalula Falls. That doesn't count the countless thousands and thousands of hours that have been donated by the people like Friends of the Falls, that Chris, Councilman Robinson has served on for a number of years, and Glenn Ingram and people like that, and I think, who is it? The Track Club, the Runners?
Gadsden Runners.
Yeah, the Gadsden Runners Club. Y'all haven't, I mean, I don't have any idea how much work they do up there, and they do it for free. They take money out of their own pocket to help Nakalula Falls, which helps our city, and then you have somebody spray painting and breaking signs and doing all kind of stuff up there. We're just not going to have it, y'all. We're just not going to put up with that. And I applaud our police department for their swift action, and I applaud Mayor Ford for his stand, and I think you'll see us, we stand behind him, and we will support all of those efforts, and we'll support our Gadsden Police Department. So, thank you all very much. And with that, I will, if there's no further comments, we stand adjourned. Thank you very much.